College meeting back into session. Next item on our agenda is new business athletic opportunities for students attending the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley.
This is a proposal that actually came from our Student Advisory Council. We had went to Mosley and met with students and had a, and one of the things they asked about was, why can't they play sports?
Right.
We couldn't come up with a good reason why they could. Mr. Pearson was here tonight, surveyed his students, and I think it was sixty-two percent of the students were in favor of this. Given their very close proximity to New Hanover, given, and schedules, it seemed that it was a logical place to allow these students to play sports. So I bring forward a recommendation that we allow the students at the Career Readiness Academy, assuming they meet all the high school athletic eligibility requirements, be allowed to play sports in partnership with New Hanover High School.
Yes, for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, any discussion?
One, just one point I thought about. Well, because I assume there are young men there or students there from different areas. You know, and this is always sometimes a hotbed, like, well, you know, hey, they're recruiting, or whatever, they should be at this school. Is there any problems that you think along those lines that might come from this?
Eddie's already got his recruiting posters ready.
Most of them, most of them weren't actually interested in soccer, because there's a lot of young men from, they're Hispanic and also young ladies, and they seem to be most interested in soccer. I don't think football, baseball.
Well, I think it's a great idea, I just didn't know if there might be some controversy later.
I mean, the program at Mosley is a great program, and this is just simply another tool to help students who are looking for a smaller environment to find a program that matches their needs.
And maybe encouraging them to come.
Oh, I agree. I think it's a good idea, I just didn't know if there might be some controversy about them all going to Hanover.
No. If there is, we'll worry about that when they come.
Yeah, Mr. Pearson, anything you'd like to add?
I think it's a great opportunity for these young men that are coming through or added. If you had one additional student that's already in the, um, the phone, so a baseball player coming through.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment to the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees, Appendix N. We have an appointment, we have four appointments to the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. We do one a year, and currently Ann David's appointment is up for renewal. We have gotten feedback from Cape Fear Community College, they appreciate her contribution. She has been very instrumental and been very involved. I don't think I've been to a CTE meeting that she wasn't at. So the recommendation is that Ann David be reappointed to the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Sound move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I do have a question. But we had the opportunity to advertise this public, correct?
We did.
And how often do we actually advertise these positions publicly?
Very often. Very, uh, if we have some, I think I can safely say in my years, that if we have somebody who is in their first time of serving and are doing a good job, and we are told they're doing a good job, that we have traditionally reappointed them. If, on the other hand, a vacancy occurs, or they're in their second term, we have advertised it and done interviews.
And how many, how often do we get reports from the Community College Board of Trustees on participation and what is actually going on in those meetings?
We get to minutes.
We get to minutes. We, sometimes more regularly than other times.
Plus, there are many times conversations that we have, I know I have, with certain trustees down there that you run into, or you see at different events and so forth, and they keep you pretty much posted as to who's doing what, who's doing a good job, and who's an asset, and in what respects.
I just think that as a, as a board, and we have four appointees to the Board of Trustees, and I think it's important for us to advertise these positions publicly, because we don't know what type of candidates are out there. It has nothing to do with Ms. David, from, from what you've provided and what you've said, and I'm sure she's doing a great job, but I think that if we don't advertise it publicly, then we're really missing, potentially missing, some other great candidates, and I'm not sure why we didn't do that.
I guess I would like to make sure that we have a set protocol. I think, I would state for the record that I think Ann's doing a great job, but I think that we should have probably a more set, some, some set guidelines on how we determine the, the reappointment, since you don't, there, there is no, there is no term, there are no term limits for these positions. They could sort of add up an item. So depending on who we ask, these people could serve forever. I think it's important that we make sure that we are doing the college a service, and, and we are also appointing people that will facilitate communication between the, the school system and, and the community college. So I think that while I am prepared to support Ann David for another term, I would like to see us move towards a set protocol for how we do these reappointments in the future, which we haven't done.
And at present, we don't have anything in writing.
Right.
Initially, I remember when I got on the board, I didn't even have any information. It was just, the question was called and we voted. And then when we got Mrs. Adams, we started a process with the interviews. We didn't even have that previously, so, but we did receive a, a letter from Ms. David asking to be reinstated. And of course, she was extremely involved all along the way with all, with the school system before she became a member of this board, so she is one that has really bridged the gap. Sometimes we had people that, we had to spend time with them to help them understand our needs, so she has been an asset in this regard.
Well, I'd love to hear from all four. Maybe in turn, once a quarter, we could bring, we could ask if, maybe each could come once a quarter to, to speak to us, and then vice versa, we could go and speak to, to their board, to again, build that, that bridge of communication, to see what comes out of it. And I, that's really what, how C-Tech evolved, was just through conversation. So I would love to see us, us work towards that, so we can get to know their board on a different level, and they can get to know us. So I, I think that we, again, I, I think we have some work to do on, on developing a protocol, so we don't have a, well, I, I've heard that they've done a good job. I think we really need to have something set, because this is a very important position. The community college does a world of good to this community, and I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing by reappointing these individuals to the board.
I agree. I think it's important that, I mean, it's our responsibility, we're responsible for appointing four people, so having them come in on a quarterly basis, you know, we can pretty easily divide it by four, you know, so at least once a year, we're hearing from our appointees about, you know, bridging those gaps between our, our school system and the community college.
So Ms. Adams, could you maybe make a list of the four appointments, appointees we have, and maybe start setting them up, about every three months, to have one of them come and speak to us?
Absolutely. When should I decide?
Uh, we can start that in July.
Probably, the summer will be tough.
All right, you want to start in September?
September.
All right, make it September.
And if you want to process, it's probably something you refer to the policy committee, they can put a policy in process in place.
Yeah, and if you're on the committee, so you'll work with Mrs. Zee Step and anyone else to get something drafted for us, that would be a big help.
Sure.
Okay?
All right. Motion is to appoint Ms. David. It's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, Beginning Teacher Support Plan, Appendix Q. Mr. Elmer, Dr. Elmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board may remember that in the past, we've used a beginning teacher support program to basically support all of our new teachers within the first three years of their hire with the system. The program has been very successful. We were audited last year, and through the audit, received distinguished categories and everything, but a couple of, one minor area that Dr. Hahn and Ms. Myers are sitting over here to help out tonight with this, already taken care of. We've worked closely with Marshall Merkel and Andrea Rains in HR to provide that support with working through instruction. The plan that we're presenting tonight has changed a little bit, because the state has changed some of the language in the requirements of licensing, from SP one to SP two, several of those types of things. It doesn't change the philosophical ideas of what we use to support the teachers, but it does change some of the language that we, we have to have in the plan that describes how we do it. So what we'd like to do is request the board approve the plan, and of course, Robin and Susan can answer any questions you might have concerning it, and this has been a, I think, a big success for the system. One of the reasons, we have a low turnover rate, and we managed to keep a lot of very good teachers that we, we've hired in the classroom after, after three years.
You have heard the report, do I hear a motion to accept it?
Sound move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Sorry, I, I do, so, Dr. Elmer, you're saying this is, this is with the changes that, that you had, and where the, where were the changes that, that you felt like you needed to make?
Well, the, the main change was in the language of licensure, between the SP one and SP, SP two changes. They changed that to a three-year position, where the principal and, and the requirements that the teacher has to meet to go, move to an SP two license after that three-year period. The other main change was that we use mentors to work with the teachers, and the state changed some of the requirements that we have to use, actually adding a requirement that the mentor must be at least proficient in their own evaluation. The evaluation has to be the state evaluation, in order to be a mentor to the teacher. We've always had that as one of our standards, because you know, we have higher standards along those lines, but the state put it in language, so we include it in language.
Okay. So that doesn't really affect us at all?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, hard to fill positions. Dr. Elmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Compensation Committee, when we met last year, one of the recommendations from the committee was that as we work through hiring, especially of support personnel, that we recognize that there are certain positions within those areas that are difficult to fill, hard to fill, and in order to support our folks' hiring in those positions, most, the support employees typically get a two-for-one ratio of years of experience to steps on the pay scale, and in order to help entice these folks to come work for us, they move to a one-to-one pay scale step. So they get one year credit for every year of service in which they've worked in the area in which we're hiring them. So what this is, is a list of those hard-to-fill positions. We'll bring this list back every year, because it does change as our, depending upon the positions we have, and the technology and everything else changes, which is what's happening, especially in maintenance and in support positions. But with that, I'd like to recommend the board approve this as our hard-to-fill position listing.
You have heard the recommendation, do I hear a motion to accept?
Sound move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, sir. Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Dr. Mark, do you have something to say?
I was just going to ask him to explain the difference between, I assume you're talking about project and capital managers?
Well, that was one of them, and then the other was what's new on here, and what dropped off, if anything.
Um, I think the new is the educational interpreter. I don't believe we had that last year, which we're having some trouble finding those, the interpreters. We're going to have a Level One and Two that we've changed, so there'll be a new job description for Level Two, will be a higher standard. I don't think the majority has changed beyond that. I think it stayed pretty much the same.
The educational interpreters are those who, that's our language interpreters?
No, it's language interpreters.
And Eddie, could you explain the difference between a capital outlay manager and a project manager?
Originally, there were two position, two separate position, capital outlay, project manager handled the capital projects that you approve each year from local funding. The other project managers were timed certain positions that were typically hired with the bond. And that's, that's currently how those positions are, are named, and, and currently how they're set up. I would just say that the, the people in both those positions, over the years, we've kind of blended that in terms of what they're handling, so that they're both handling some bond projects and some capital outlay projects.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item. Meal price increases, Appendix Q. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're asking the board to approve a meal price increase for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. Increases will be for lunch only, and this would affect the price at pre-K elementary and middle schools, would increase from two fifty to two fifty-five, an increase of five cents. And at high schools, the current price is two fifty-five, that would increase to two sixty, also an increase of five cents. This pricing, price increase is required to ensure sufficient funds are provided to cover our meal costs in compliance with the federal guidelines.
You have heard the recommendation, do I hear a motion to accept these price increases?
Sound move. For approval?
I got a motion from Mr. Shell, second, and Ms. Ee Step. Any questions or discussion?
The other way around.
Huh?
Other way around, but that's okay.
Well, I thought he went first.
No, he's second.
I'll let him win this time.
I would just make a, it's not, it's not applicable to this, but just a note, you've seen a lot in the paper about lunch charges and, and the concept called lunch shaming. If a student comes to us at lunch for a meal, we give them a meal. We don't do a peanut butter sandwich if you don't, can't afford the lunch. And partly, that's what contributes to that lunch bill that we have, is we're going to give a kid whatever the basic lunch is that day, because our policy is our, a kid's not going to go home hungry. We may not allow them to do extra charges, but that lunch bill is part of, is a reflection of that, but we're not going to punish the child for a parent's behavior.
And it should probably be pointed out, that a lot of times, parents, if they would sign the paperwork for the free and reduced lunch, a lot of that would be eliminated altogether. So, I ca, you know, I, I know it's getting to the end of the school year, but I would encourage next year, that we make a real effort to say to parents, you know, we don't publish who's doing this, but say to parents, you know, if you need help, please take advantage of this, because it is available.
Yes. Ms. Smith has done a, a really good job, you know, working with the principals and, and doing exactly that. You know, she, she has increased the number of applications that, that we have received and.
Good. Good.
But isn't there a rather large amount that we have to write off?
Yes.
The write-off amount is less this year than, significantly less than it was last year.
Could I get a figure on that? Because I.
We will, yeah, we'll get that out there.
It's eighty-five, well, it was eighty-five something the last time they, but it fluctuates, so.
It was, last year was over six figures, and this year it's under six.
And of course, each school has to work to get their, the money back. I know at the high school level for graduation, they have a little leeway there with all the events that these students can attend, they need to pay their, their fees, but certainly, we work with these families. But we now have a collection agency that also works to help get that money.
What, the impact of the program we started a couple of years ago, excuse me, where if there's free and reduced lunches for, or free breakfast, then we provide lunch for every student in that school? Would you speak to that a little bit?
I will. Is that, are you referring to the community eligibility provision?
Yeah.
And we have that program at twenty-one of our schools, and I can tell you, it's helped participation, it's, you know, schools are now can, can focus on the student, instead of worrying about collecting the free and reduced applications. But we do encourage parents, and they can still apply, I'll still take applications till the last day of school, so that will help them with the follow, you know, for the next school year, because the eligibility carries over thirty days within the new school year. So in fact, we took some applications this week alone, so it's never too late to apply. If they need assistance, you know, filling out the application, we have personnel on staff that can help. We have it in Spanish. I can get into any language that they, they speak, if they need that, that assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
But I, I think one of the problems, too, is that until they fill out the form and it's approved, then, and the students assume, or parents assume, that the same guidelines will follow the student for the next year, so they don't apply, and then there's that cost that we don't get back for the government.
Well, does, if they are on the free and reduced program this current school year, will carry over into the ne, new school year for thirty days.
For thirty days, yes.
And, yes ma'am, and up to thirty days. So if they apply within the first week, then we, they have a new application on file. Not only do we go through free and reduced applications, but we also work with DSS, with the food stamp, so we automatically approve over eight thousand students before school even starts. So I'm pleased to say that we've worked a great partnership with DSS. We have wonderful social workers on staff that I'm able to know about McKinney-Vento students, any, any students that are foster. We have, we, we have wonderful relationships with people that we're able to pre-approve students even before school starts, but filling out that application is, you know, is essential if they don't qualify for McKinney-Vento food stamps, foster, and those are the three areas that I can automatically qualify parents. And we send letters out to let them know that they're qualified before school starts, to let them know they don't have to fill out an application. So if they need help, we're taking applications up through the end of, the last day of school, so they're welcome to apply.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the school lunch prices signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
I just want to say, I admire your customer service attitude. I really do. I think that's impressive.
All right. Next item on the agenda, vending sponsorship agreement for selected high schools, Appendix R.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We ask the board to approve the high school vending sponsorship agreements presented for New Hanover, Ashley, and Haggard. These agreements will start July one, two thousand seventeen, for a one-year term, and have a renewal option for four years.
Hear a motion to accept?
Sound move.
Sound move.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate a little bit on how that works?
Well, these, we, we bid these, the last contracts were bid five years ago, and they were renewed. We advertise it, the beverage companies submit a proposal, they evaluate the proposal, and pick the, the, the best proposal for the school. On the attachment, you can see, like at New Hanover High School, Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company, the school receives a twenty-five percent commission, or thirty-one cents on each item sold. There's a Gatorade Sports, Sports Kit, there's donated product. So these are, these are the beverage, school beverage com, agreements that for each high school, the Haggard High School will expire next year. These are the vending machines that you see out and about at our high schools.
So when they donate that money, where does that money go?
Goes into the school fund.
To the school general?
It goes to the school. It goes into the school fund.
Okay, and, and so how?
These are, these are contracts that are, or agreements that are held with the school. I'm, Smith and her staff help administer the contracts and ensure compliance with the child nutrition guidelines.
And so when the funds, when you say they go back into the school, is it just like a, a, a general application use, or does it go to a specific use, or?
It's general revenue for their general fund. It's a, it's one of the few revenue sources, you know, that schools used to, to manage this themselves, separate from child nutrition, but we felt when, when all the guidelines kind of restricted when we could have vending operating, that's when we, we sort of consolidated and centralized this bidding process, to make sure the contracts were appropriate, but it's always been school-based revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question. The SERS vending sponsorship agreement, what are they sponsoring? I mean, it, it's, it sounds like, I mean, why isn't it just a vending agreement? And, because it makes it sound like this is where, for example, the scoreboards and things are coming from.
Used to be. Traditionally, in the old days, they would do, this would be, scoreboards would be one of the things in these contracts.
Well, I mean.
They'd donate, you know.
Yeah, well, but my, my question is, you know, when you call it a vending sponsorship, it sounds like they are sponsoring something, and I don't, what I hear is we're getting a commission.
Yeah, they, they do, as part of this agreement, they, they can advertise, and they have, you know, exclusive rights to advertise their product, their company at that high school.
Well, I understand that. I understand. I'm just, I guess it's the semantics of using the word sponsorship. Sponsorship to me, as I said, would imply that we're getting something from them rather, beyond a commission, and what I'm hearing is, we're getting a commission on every can of drinks sold. Now, as I read this, I mean.
There's a commission, and there's donated, there's donated product, and then there, the, there's a sponsorship, also four hundred dollars per year. I think that's, that's at New Hanover, and the sponsorship of three hundred dollars per year at, at Laney and at Ashley. So there's more than, than just the, the commission and the donated product.
Well, I mean, I ain't going to get, I, I can't get all bent out of shape, but it just strikes me, using the word sponsorship is a little misleading, but, because they don't really seem to be sponsoring anything, they just seem to be paying for the right to be able to sell their products on our schools. But be that as it might. Okay. All right.
One more. Can you give us an example of what Mr. Shell was talking about, the funds goes to a school general fund? Can you give me some examples, or an example of what that money specifically would be used for?
Each school, we, we have something in their treasurer's manual called a general fund guidelines, that gives a principal guidelines on how principals discretionary funds can be spent, what type of expenditures are appropriate. There's also other funds in the school that are more specifically designated, like club accounts and grants, that are also in school funds, but this would be part of the general fund that is not designated or budgeted, but it's under the principal's discretion within guidelines that we set. And we can certainly provide that.
Give us an example, if there's professional development, that may cost more than what the professional development budget is, that's something they could do. It could be used for materials, it could be used for when they come back to school, maybe some supplies, or a breakfast when they're coming back to school. So it's, it's got less, it's, it's not categorized like a typical budget item.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item. General liability. Uh, general liability coverage renewal, appendix S, Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Uh, your general liability coverage agreement, uh, expires at the end of June. Uh, these are one-year agreements. Uh, this year, we took a look at the cost and compared it to the cost from a private insurance company. Um, and we found that if you were to bundle your general liability, auto, and workers' comp altogether with Liberty Mutual Insurance Company, you could save money and get better coverage. Um, although the general liability would cost you a little more, uh, you would save more than that on automobile and workers' comp. I gave you the figures that you're attached to the, uh, agenda items for you to look at. And, uh, so it's my recommendation that this year you switch from the North Carolina School Boards Trust to Liberty Mutual for general liability coverage. Switch from, uh, the School Boards Trust to Liberty Mutual for workers' comp coverage and stay with Liberty Mutual for automobile liability coverage, which you already have.
You've heard the recommendation.
Three, I'm sorry, these are three separate items, so, uh, the first item is only the general liability coverage.
Aye, um, do I hear a motion to accept?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bullard, can you explain sovereign governmental immunity and when you may waive that? Um, and I, I guess the last part would, why would you ever want to waive that?
Sure, um, the law gives the Board of Education what's called sovereign or governmental immunity, uh, the same that cities and counties in the state of North Carolina have, which means that as a government entity, it's immune from most tort lawsuits. A tort is a wrong committed, uh, typically that results in a monetary injury to someone, such as if someone slips and falls on your sidewalk or something like that and files a claim. Uh, governmental entities in North Carolina have governmental immunity, which means they can't be sued. Or if they do get sued, that suit quickly gets dismissed. Um, the law says that if a governmental entity wants to waive its immunity by purchasing liability insurance, it can do so, but it only waives its immunity to the extent of the insurance. So if the board, for instance, I'm recommending the board purchase two million dollars in coverage from Liberty Mutual. That means the board is waiving its immunity for up to two million dollars per claim for claims that are covered by that insurance. If the claim is not covered by insurance or, or to the extent it exceeds two million dollars, the board would retain its governmental immunity for that portion of the claim.
And, and the reason for waiving that immunity would almost be a fairness argument?
It would be a fairness argument because, uh, in our circumstances in which the board or its employees do make mistakes and are negligent and that results in the injury to a citizen or a student. And the feeling is that in, in certain circumstances, those people should be compensated.
And what you've said, I guess, um, what you've prevented, presented for the GL coverage, um, it looks like it's what, six to seven percent of the policy is your premium? Is that fair? So, to me, that means that there are a lot of suits? Because it costs so much just for the premium?
Um.
I mean, it seems like a hundred thirty-eight thousand is a pretty steep premium, premium for.
We, we don't have a lot of lawsuits against us, actually. Uh, I think the premium is just due to the, the size of our district, the number of students we have, the number of facilities we have, and the risk of a large claim coming in from time to time.
Appreciate it.
Have a question. Uh, I guess as I understand it, we're switching from the School Boards Trust because they did not, they don't provide automobile insurance?
They do, they gave us a quote for automobile insurance, uh, but it was higher than Liberty Mutual's quote. Uh, and actually, their quote was for less coverage and their premium quote was higher.
Well, I mean, I'm on a, I received a, an email today from the North Carolina, uh, School Boards Trust. And I don't, I, I hadn't got it right here in front of me, but they suggested that Liberty Mut- Mutual was twenty-eight thousand dollars higher than what theirs was. And I just wondered, you know, what's the differentiation? What, what, is, is it because they only quoted on, uh, uh, liability and workman's comp? And they're not including the automobile? I mean, I, I'm just, I don't understand why they say they're twenty-eight thousand dollars cheaper than Liberty Mutual would be.
Uh, I, I gave you the numbers there, the School Board Trust and Liberty Mutual both quoted all three coverages.
Okay.
Um, I think where the confusion comes in is that if you go with the School Boards Trust, uh, that does not provide you coverage for, uh, accidents that would happen on field trips that students may take on large vessels or boats, like a ferry or a charter boat. And if you recall, last year, there was a discussion about trying to cover, uh, the liability for those types of field trips. And we decided to actually purchase a separate insurance policy to cover those field trips.
Okay.
The price of that policy would, would be twelve to thirteen thousand dollars a year. So to compare apples to apples, you have to add that to the trust quote because the trust doesn't cover those large vessel trips, whereas Liberty Mutual automatically covers them in the quote that they gave us.
Okay.
So that's twelve thousand of the difference. Um, and, um, as reflected in the numbers, even after factoring that in, the trust is ten thousand dollars per year, cheaper than Liberty on the liability portion alone. But if you notice, if you go with Liberty for all three, you'll save five thousand dollars on the automobile and almost thirty thousand on your workers' comp. So, but, and the only way to get those, uh, rates for auto and workers' comp with Liberty is to go with them on all three. If you own, don't go on all three, then some of their quotes will increase on the others. They, they're quoting a quantity discount or a package deal.
Okay, aye, just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, last year, we added an employee, I believe, to work with workers' comp.
Yes, sir.
Will that employee still be engaged at, with this policy?
Yeah, she's our risk manager, Julie Moore, um, she is very helpful in workers' comp cases. Um, as you will see, both of the quotes were for, uh, plans in which we are self-insured for the first one hundred thousand dollars on each claim. Um, and, uh, she is, Ms. Moore is very instrumental in managing the payouts within that one hundred thousand dollar limit. If a claim goes over that, it just becomes the insurance company's issue, but it's our money for the first one hundred thousand. So she is very good at watching those expenditures. And one of the reasons that I'm recommending switching from the trust to Liberty Mutual for workers' comp is that Liberty Mutual will give us a lot more control over how that first one hundred thousand dollars is being spent.
Thank you, I understand it, thanks.
Aye, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item is workers' compensation insurance renewal.
I, I told you these were actually listed as three separate items, so what you just approved is the auto, uh, excuse me, the general liability. And so now I'm asking you to approve the, um.
The comp, workers' comp.
Workers' comp, I'm sorry, my computer battery died. Uh, the work, the workers' comp, uh, plan, uh, I'm asking you to switch from the trust to Liberty Mutual at a cost of four hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars for a plan in which you are self-insured on the first one hundred thousand on each claim.
You have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions or discussions? Yes, sir.
Uh, just one, I think, I just, I just don't remember the answer. Uh, when you go from one insurance company to another, uh, you have to worry about runout, meaning, or.
Gap in coverage.
Yes, sir.
Um, the only one you would have to, you, you do, uh, you do sometimes, uh, and there is a slight possibility that by switching, you would have a claim that, that ended up not being covered. I don't think that risk is very great. And part of Liberty Mutual's quote is for a, an endorsement for what they call bridge coverage, which would cover claims like that. The problem is they're not going to give you, um, a lot of coverage on those bridge claims. So there would be a fifty thousand dollar per claim and one hundred thousand dollar aggregate limit on that bridge endorsement. Um, however, I think the chance of that, uh, happening is very slight because the only way that would happen is if, uh, a claim arose that had not already been made and we knew about but didn't report to Liberty Mutual prior to agreeing to take out the policy with them. We have given them a, a list of all the potential claims that we're aware of. Uh, there's a couple we, we need to update them with, but once we do that, as long as we tell them about the claim, if it comes up later, it's covered. It's only if we knew about a claim and didn't tell them that it wouldn't be covered under your regular coverage, then it falls to the bridge coverage. And if that's not enough to pay the claim, the board can fall back on governmental immunity. I know it's complicated, does that make sense?
No, I, I, I follow you, thank you.
I think it, there's a slight risk there and I sent the board a memo about that in, uh, uh, I think last week or the week before. They kind of went through it in detail. And although there is a risk, I think it's slight and I think it's worth, uh, the cost savings to do that. We've talked to other school boards that have done the same thing and they have not seemed to have a problem.
Any other questions?
Briefly, Mr. Bullard, if you're, you're saying for the workers' comp that we're self-insured for the first hundred thousand, um, by declaring that you're self-insured, do you waive governmental immunity?
Well, we don't have governmental immunity for workers' comp claims. And the stat, the workers' comp statutes waive the immunity for us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda is the automobile insurance renewal. Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the third, uh, part of the coverages that are, are being presented to you. This is liability coverage for automobile accidents. Um, I, you are currently with Liberty Mutual with four million dollars in coverage. I'm recommending that you stay with Liberty Mutual. Um, actually, their, their quote, as you can see, has gone down about nine thousand dollars from this year. Uh, the, the, the quote is eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars for four million dollars in coverage. And what that covers is all of your vehicles except your yellow school buses. By statute, the state of North Carolina, uh, covers all liability related to accidents involving your yellow school buses. So you don't have to purchase insurance regarding those. But you do have about a hundred and eighty-five other vehicles, such as white activity buses, uh, and maintenance, uh, vehicles, as well as driver's ed vehicles. And so the, it's those one hundred and eighty-five or so vehicles that you have to purchase liability insurance for if you want coverage. And that is what the Liberty Mutual policy would cover.
Any other questions?
Sorry, is that four million dollars in coverage, is that an aggregate?
Uh, I know it, it is per claim, whether there's also a four million aggregate, I'd have to check my records on that. But, but I know it is a per claim limit. Uh, it, it could also be a four million dollar aggregate, but I'd have to check my notes on that.
It would seem, it would seem right, four million seems pretty high for, per claim, right?
Yeah, well, the thinking was that you're going to have students riding on activity buses in the event, in the event of a catastrophic accident.
Right.
You could have a lot of people needing compensation.
Right, so you have per claim, yeah.
Right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, the public consulting group contract, appendix B, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is our contract of our serv- of our group that, um, helps us to reclaim, um, Medicaid, um, from federal government. As you know, this, this, uh, question comes up every year as to what this group does. Um, as you see, the cost of that is also they manage our, uh, special education, uh, software that we use called Goalview, which is, which is what manages our IEP system. Um, next year, um, the state is, is going with this group and will be changing over to the state plan, because it would essentially be Goalview, but the state is taking it over as its plan. And nearly every, um, large, well, all the large districts in the, in North Carolina use this group to reclaim Medicaid, um, uh, funds and for things that can be billable through Medicaid. There's only one school district in the state that does not and they have, they have such a mess that they are looking for some help in this regard as well. As you know, Medicaid is a very complicated system and, um, you gotta really pay somebody to do this for you if, if you really want to get any, any money out of it. This year alone, at this point in time, last year, at this point, last year, we had, we were, we were getting a million three back from Medicaid. This year already, we're getting a million five and that's not the end of the year yet. So we still have some additional claims out there. So this is a fairly significant amount of money, um, that we're reclaiming, we're having to pay. What you see is, is a good amount of money, but it's money well spent. Um, if we were not using this, there's no way we could reclaim this kind of money through Medicaid. It's, it's like, um, playing chess on multiple levels and then the rules change and they move the chessboard on you and make you blindfold to play it. And it's just, without this, you just, you don't get the money. At one point in time, we were trying to do, this has probably been about fifteen years ago when I was still building principal, and, um, people were having to do work stu- work time studies. In other words, administrators were having to say, okay, this time out of time, what I'm using. And it was a mess and people weren't doing it right and it really, we really weren't getting the Medicaid reimbursement that was due to us. Um, next year, kind of the rules all change after next year. We'll be coming back with some different ideas, but this next year was pretty much the same. So we're asking that you approve this.
Okay. Any, uh, questions? Other questions? Aye, hearing none, all those in favor signify.
Don't have a motion.
I thought I had a motion. I'm sorry, I need a motion then to accept.
So move.
Second.
Aye, have a motion and a second, any questions then? Aye. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item. Interim healthcare of Eastern Carolina contract, appendix W, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is not our nursing contract for our schools. This is our nursing contract for our, uh, special needs children who have a requirement in their IEP that requires a one-on-one nurse. Um, so this, uh, contract is, uh, we put this out for bid and, um, this is the group that's won it for the past couple of years. So, um, ask us your approval.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, don't have a. Got a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion?
Is, are some of these costs recaptured from Medicaid dollars?
Nursing is a really weird service with Medicaid and really, we don't, it's not, what I'm, how I'm told by my experts is that nursing services is not, um, there's not enough back from that to warrant the cost of going after the nursing services. It's like physical therapy and occupational therapy and things like that, that we get the billable amount from Medicaid. But nursing services is so minimal that it doesn't merit going after the nursing service.
Not cost effective. So do we get any of these dollars back? I mean, do we try to bill like through insurance companies or?
No, ma'am, this is through IEP. This is all, this is all federal money through IEPs.
You mean, like, we get the, the money back from the, from the, this is just.
This is, this is money coming out of our, coming out of our special education dollars, yes ma'am.
How many students do we support?
I don't have that number, but it's not a very large number. I can get the number for you.
I mean, it just goes to show that we've got some students that we support with some very, uh, obviously severe issues and, um, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of money to come out of our, our special ed dollars.
The one, yes ma'am, you're correct. One thing is about, um, and one of, one of the, one of the reasons why I'm proud to be a public educator a public educator and at the same time, it, 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 it puts you at, at somewhat of, 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 of a limit as to what you can do is, as a public school, we're a lot like the New Testament church. We can't turn anybody away. Everybody, everybody gets to come and we're glad about that. But a lot of the children that we have come with lots of needs and we're required under the federal guidelines to serve them. And, um, they're very expensive, uh, to, to meet their needs.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I do have a motion and a second. Uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, ROI software lease, Appendix X. Ms. Britson.
Yes, request the board to approve the, um, five-year lease to Sea Glass Leasing on behalf of, um, Tunnor Exchange. This software goes along with the new copiers that we're putting in. It allows us to manage from a server perspective versus somebody having to go to the machine and put in teachers' codes. We're able to do it from the server and it goes out to all the schools. This, uh, somebody at the school can sit in the office, go to a program, set up the allotments and then we'll get reports. Plus it'll allow teachers to print on any printer in the machine. When they send the printer, they'll just pick either black and white or color. They'll go to that, that machine and then they'll be able to get their document out. They won't have to worry about going to a specific machine in the building. So, request that you approve this lease.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, renewal of interlocal agreement for ground maintenance services, Appendix Y, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a interlocal agreement for grounds maintenance services. Uh, it was originally in, entered into with the county in twenty thirteen. Uh, in twenty fifteen, it was, um, renewed for a two-year term. We're asking you to approve another renewal, uh, tonight. Um, I would ask the board, uh, this agreement has been, uh, submitted to the county. We've made some minor modifications or changes primarily due to adding schools, Porter's Neck Elementary School, Sidbury, and also taking schools out like Blair and, uh, College Park. But, uh, the, the agreement is being renewed by the, uh, county attorney. So with your approval, I'd also like, uh, you to add that if there are any additional changes requested by the, uh, county attorney, that Wayne could approve those. If they were, uh, minor in nature, any major changes would bring this agreement back to you for your approval.
Okay, so minor changes Wayne could handle, major changes, you would bring it back to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, you've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion to accept it?
Motion.
I got a... Did you make the motion?
Uh, sure.
Mr. Shale made the motion. Mr., Mr. Hayes is the second. Okay. I didn't want to mess up. All right, any, uh, questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Anderson. I also, uh, serve on the county, uh, Parks Advisory Board and they speak very highly of your involvement and that you've made a huge difference in the working relationship. I just thought you ought to hear that.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I, uh, work closely with Ms. Duckworth and, uh, appreciate that relationship as well and, uh, think the same of the county staff.
I assume that you, since you're recommending that we do this, that it has been beneficial to us?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, I think both, uh, the county and the school system are pleased with the contract and the, uh, level of service that the, uh, county's providing at these facilities.
Okay, good.
Well, just one comment I'd make is having served on that for Mr. Shale does such an outstanding job. It anticipated a lot as far as savings. Is, is that continuing to be realized, I guess, as far as the cooperation between the county and the school system and, and, and the work that's taking place?
Well, I, I think the savings was really projected on the county side. Um, the, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that, um, the cost of the contract was taken from our budget and then the county took over, um, the agreement and it was, uh, to save funds and save positions.
Any further, further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, year-end amendment resolution, Appendix Z, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request, um, the board's approval of this resolution that would authorize me to approve budget amendments on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, to balance budget to actual expenditures for state position allocations and any non-allotted line items and to transfer state and local funds as needed to maximize state funding. This is necessary because we are still getting revisions of the state budget after this meeting and we need to be able to keep, keep, um, ma- making sure every state dollar is used between now and June thirtieth.
Here, here.
So this is your debt ceiling amendment?
Yes, sir.
So you can continue to operate.
Do I hear a motion to accept this report?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, interim budget resolution, Appendix double A, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. Um, this, this resolution would allow us to continue to operate between, um, July first and, um, the anticipated approval of the budget by the board at your July meeting. So I request your approval.
Move for approval.
Have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item P, disposal of surplus property, I... Normally I thought that was Mr. Anderson's job.
Remember we've moved purchasing, oh, into the finance.
Okay, all right, as being unnecessary.
There you go. Yes.
Um, thank you. We request your approval of this property list, which is, um, being no longer necessary, desirable for public school purposes and must be disposed of in accordance with public school law. Um, we are planning, um, auctions for this list, um, subsequent to the board's approval. It, um, we'll conduct the auctions, um, one at Blair Elementary School on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, and one at College Park Elementary on June twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Q, consideration of design consultant agreement for Myrtle Grove Middle School renovation, Appendix CC, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Myrtle Grove Middle School renovations are included in the two thousand fourteen bond program. The board selected, um, Bowman Murray Hemingway Architects PC at their meeting on February seventh. Uh, since then, staff has negotiated fees which are consistent with other projects of similar size and scope. And tonight we ask you to approve the design consultant agreement in the amount of five hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars with Bowman Murray Hemingway Architects, Inc.
Hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can you briefly tell, say what's going on at Myrtle Grove? What, what's being done?
Well, the, uh, we're obviously just getting started in the design, uh, phase at this point, but the, uh, what was budgeted was renovations to the existing spaces. There's no, uh, additions, uh, planned. Uh, we basically want to fix what's there, fix what they have, uh, class, provide all the, uh, technology and, uh, all the other things that would be in a typical classroom that we would build new today.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, consideration of design consultant agreement for Roland Greis Middle School renovation, Appendix DD, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, Roland Greis Middle School renovations are also included in the two thousand fourteen bond program. The board selected Becker Morgan Group Incorporated at the meeting on Septem, February seventh. Uh, again, staff has negotiated fees. Fees are consistent with other projects of similar size and scope. And tonight we ask you to approve the design consultant agreement in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand and eighty-six dollars with Becker Morgan Group Incorporated.
Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Second? Any questions?
Just this one. So, um, in general, when you, um, from a, from, from a standpoint of how you're going to spend bond funds for these schools, is it, um, kind of just like a, an overall, uh, are you looking at infrastructure and is it mostly technology related? I mean, well, I, I know he asked the question, but I, I'm still not clear.
Yeah.
On what you're doing.
Yeah, a big, a big part of, um, of, of what we're looking at is building infrastructure and building systems. You know, a lot of the money will go into, uh, uh, replacing roofs, replacing windows, replacing and upgrading lighting systems, uh, replacing and upgrading mechanical systems. As you recall, um, you know, Roland Greis, the two-story classroom building has, um, steam heat and window units. So we, we do anticipate, um, putting in a new mechanical system at Roland Greis. Um, you know, unfortunately, a lot of those things are things that, um, they will appreciate nonetheless, but they're not very visible. You know, they're, they're behind the walls, behind the scenes. Uh, what you will see when you walk in, uh, new, uh, new ceilings, new floors, painting, um, you know, in a typical classroom, the technology, uh, that we would provide in a classroom today would be in those classrooms as well. One of the things when we talked about this bond is that a lot of this bond would go to, it's not going to big shiny buildings. It's going into fixing a lot of deferred maintenance that came out of the recession that we went through when we deferred stuff, uh, when we were putting cap, pushing off capital to save, uh, operating dollars. Well, so we've, um, we have been having some programming meetings, um, and we're meeting at Myrtle Grove and Roland Greis. Uh, the, the principal, uh, there's some teachers that are involved as well as, uh, PTA people that are involved. Uh, we have sent surveys out to the staff. So at this point, we're trying to identify, you know, what they see as, as the needs and, uh, and how best we can address those needs in the, in the design phase. So we, um, we will bring schematic designs, uh, back to you in the fall on both these projects as well and I can give you a much better, or at least a more detailed description of what we're, what we're looking at.
And, and this is the design side of it? The seven hundred and twenty-six thousand is for a design and then you've got another, uh, ten or eleven million dollars to work it out on this particular project?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, consideration of construction management at risk agreement for Myrtle Grove Middle School renovation, Appendix EE, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, again, Myrtle Grove Middle School is part of our two thousand fourteen bond program and, uh, the Board of Education selected Montiff Construction Corporation as the construction manager, uh, on May second. Uh, staff has negotiated fees, which again are consistent with fees on projects of similar size and scope. And tonight we ask the board to approve the construction management at risk agreement with Montiff Construction Corp. in the amount of, uh, well, actually for a targeted, uh, guaranteed maximum price or GMP of seven million, seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
I got a second. Any questions?
Yeah, um, so you've had enough experience now with this cash management, I mean, construction manager at risk, um, that you have, you, you have an opinion on it now? Stronger opinion?
Um, I certainly have a better understanding of it. Um, and, um, I don't think my opinion has changed. I think that, um, the general statutes give you several delivery options for public bid. Um, I think that the design bid build, uh, is a good delivery method for certain projects and that construction management at risk is a good delivery method for other projects. Um, you know, we'll continue to use both delivery methods in going forward.
I have just a quick, like, question for clarification. Under this, it says with a targeted guaranteed maximum price of seven million, seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. What does that mean?
That's a good question. In a typical design build, uh, contract, you establish a GMP or a guaranteed maximum price. Uh, it all depends on when you establish that GMP in the design process. Uh, some, uh, some contracts estab, establish the GMP early on in design. Uh, our contracts in, are like most, uh, CM agreements, uh, throughout the state with, used by other public schools. Um, we establish a target GMP when we enter the contract. We allow the contractor to receive bids and then we come to you, like we did at Haggard and Laney with a change order, uh, if the GMP, if the bids are actually higher or lower than the GMP. And then that sets the, the, uh, GMP for the remainder of the project. Where it does limit the risk, uh, to some degree, I think the, uh, uh, the other side of that coin is that it establishes a much better partnership between the designer, the, uh, construction manager and the owner, uh, during the design and bidding phase. Uh, because there's, you're, you're all working for the same goal and that is to bring this project within the target GMP. There's no advantage to any, either, either party for the, uh, actual bids to be either higher or lower.
So... Montiff has basically, well, we are entering into a contract with Montiff, excuse me, whereby they are saying that we feel like we can build these renovations for seven million dollars. And will we have change orders coming and all of that or?
Well, the, they're, in the, uh, the risk for the, uh, construction manager is that the, if they find errors and omissions or they left something out in the bidding process and, um, there's a scope gap or something like that, those are things that are, that would be, that they would have to cover. Now, if the owner in the, in the middle of construction decided to make a change.
Oh, I understand that.
Or add scope, then yes, we would bring a change order to you.
But the goal is that this project will come in at right around seven million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay.
And does the, um, construction manager at risk are, they su, they su, they, uh, they bid it out, um, you bring the award of the subcontractors back to this board for approval? Or not?
Well, actually, the, uh, the subcontractors would have a contract with the CM, not a contract directly with the, uh, school board. What we would bring back, assuming that the, um, after bids, the, the total of those bids would either be, um, I mean, it's unlikely it's going to be the exact amount. So it would be slightly higher or slightly lower than the target GMP. So, it would be slightly higher or slightly lower than the target GMP. We would bring to the school board a change order to, to change the GMP to match the total of the bids. So, you would see the bids at that time.
And as far as the supervision of the work, is that entirely up to the, to the construction manager?
No, actually, as part of this construction management process, that's one of the things we negotiate with the, with the construction manager is, you know, who we want on the job. Do we want a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, a project engineer, project manager, all the way down to what size trailer we want on the job? Do we want it large enough to hold meetings? Do we want computers and copiers? Those are all part of the general conditions that are negotiated as part of the contract.
So, who, what I'm getting at is, I've, I've seen where projects fell apart with overreliance on one party or the other. So, who audits the auditor, so to speak? And who do we have someone that is checking on that, other than county inspections?
Well, we have the, the design team that, the contract that you just awarded. As part of this project, that design team, we have weekly construction meetings. Our project managers will be attending those, as well as the design team. And they would conduct field, field, field visits and observations, provide those field reports. We also hire a third party for material testing and special inspections. You'll call it the last board meeting. We hired a, we entered a contract with SNME for, for those services at College Park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a construction management at risk agreement for Roland Grice Middle School renovations, Appendix FF. Eddie Anderson.
Thank you. This is for Roland Grice Middle School, which is included in the 2014 bond program. The board selected WM Jordan Companies, Inc. as the construction manager on May 2nd of this year. We've completed negotiation for fees and feel the fees are consistent with fees on projects of other similar size and scope. And tonight, we recommend that you approve the construction management at risk agreement with WM Jordan Company, Inc. with a guaranteed maximum price of $9,335,837.
Per the recommendation, do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Do have one question. How old is Roland Grice? 1960. So, it's, what is that making? I can't, can't do the math real quick. 57 years old?
1960 years and 2047.
57, so it's 57 years old. These renovations, do we have an estimate of how much it will extend the life expectancy of the school?
Well, I would tell you, I would hope to get another 50 years out of the building. Whether we'll, but obviously, you know, we'll have to do more renovations. And even the new HVAC system we put in as part of these renovations isn't going to last 50 years.
Well, I understand that, but I mean-
But structurally, structurally, there's no reason why the building shouldn't be there for another 50 years.
Okay. That's, you know, I mean, you got a 57-year-old building. I mean, I'm not suggesting that 57-year-old building is, is dilapidated or anything. I just am questioning, I mean, you know, $35,000, $35 million to build a new middle school and $9 million to renovate it. And, I mean, it's just simply a question of worth. Is it worth it? And obviously, in this case, it is. Okay.
It is. In terms of building life, we, public schools in general probably do a better job than almost anybody in extending the life of their buildings. We have celebrated the 100-year anniversary of two of our schools.
Get close to a third one.
I know.
Add over. All right. Have a motion and a second. Any questions?
How much of Roland Grice is actually going to be renovated? Do you know, like, I know you don't have an actual percentage, but it was my impression that it was mainly the building where the library is contained. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. You'll recall when we were putting together the, the bond referendum. First of all, the, the long-range plan did call for renovations and additions at both Roland Grice and Middle School, Roland Grice and Myrtle Grove. We pulled the renovations, the additions out and focused just on the renovations. And then, once to, to get to the 160 million number, we actually used the four middle school projects as our balancing project and reduced those equally to get, to get that, to get our program to match 160 million. We're in the process now of, of looking at the design, and we're going to be designing to meet a budget. But you're exactly right. I think the committee all agrees that the highest priority is a two-story classroom building. And if we, if we don't do anything else, let's do that building and let's do it right. Beyond that, it'll be based on available funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, New Hanover County Mental Health Contract, Appendix GG. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is our mental health contract with the Health Department that we have. They provide 13 mental health workers and one supervisor, essentially 14 mental health workers, that cover 18 of our most needy schools. And it's not just needy based on socioeconomics, but the number of actual mental health needs in that particular school, or that we've seen in that particular school. However, they work with us. If we have a particular need at another school, that they'll help us cover that. Also, today, you'll notice that I sent you some information about how we're covering other schools. Our Student Services Department has worked really hard with the community agencies that provide mental health services, that have, provide some coverage to our other schools. And I've given you the list of those other schools and those other community providers, which are like Coastal Horizons, the White Clinics that we have, RHA, and Learning Perspectives, that cover for third-party coverage. In other words, like parents' insurance, those kinds of things covering in those particular cases. We understand the need for mental health in our schools is great. You don't have to convince us of that as student support services, individuals, and professionals. And we're working really hard to shore that up, and our community is responding, basically. So, I ask that you would approve the mental health contract with the Health Department.
Do I hear a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
I second it.
Okay. Any other, any questions?
Yeah, I do. There's, I guess it's page three, down close to Mary Hayes's signature. You've got two revenue sources in there. What are the, where, can you identify those? I just see another.
Sorry. The first item is the at-risk, sorry, thank you. At-risk services. And the second is one of our, the Medicaid-related services reimbursements that we were referring to earlier in the evening, the Program 306. There's $101,008 or $659 from Medicaid reimbursement. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was following you, but I'm just not understanding the application of it. We had talked a little bit earlier about deriving revenue off of a service. And Dr. Holliday had explained how, as these folks do this work and they turn in what they did, that, that's how you're using up the $680. I guess I was trying to understand revenue.
There's, there's two different types of Medicaid reimbursement. One is, and I may have just quoted the wrong one, one is related services, which is more what he was describing earlier. The other is the admin, administrative reimbursement, that all the folks that sort of also, that aren't doing direct medical, but that also have billable administrative services. And in the past, we had used that somewhat to support nursing and mental health. So, I have to verify, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, which, which source that is. But we have used this to support this contract for many years, but we'll double check.
And Dr. Holliday, I think we want to get Mr. Hayes's name off of there, since he's no longer the chair. Do you look at the signature line?
Will do.
Thank you. Unless he wants to write his check to help us out.
Hey. Mr. Paul to represent me.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, New Hanover County Nurse Service Contract, Appendix HH. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is our nurse contract with our, with the, with the Health Department, the one that we bring forward every year. This provides our school nurse program and our schools. Ask that you approve it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, New Hanover County Sheriff's Department School Resource Officers Contract, Appendix II. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you know, our resource officers that we have in our high schools and our middle schools are provided through an agreement with the county and the sheriff's department, and we're not billed for those anymore because of the way that the budget works. And I'll, Mary Hazel will have to talk about the magic of the budget there. And Ms. Schell, you probably understand that well, too, the magic of how that works. So, this is not included in this. This is the, if you recall, a few years ago, when Sandy Hook Elementary School occurred, and we were looking for a solution and putting some coverage in our elementary schools. The sheriff stepped up a little bit, and we also got a grant from the state to provide some resource officers for elementary schools. And now, since we've applied for that, it, it comes to us, as, as Mary Hazel will have to say this, because we've talked a little bit about this, but it comes to us as now an allotment. And we don't know when that allotment's going to go away, but it didn't go away this year. Did I say that right, Mary Hazel? So, so it's, the money's still coming to us, so we will have that available to us to pay our school resource officers that cover our elementary schools. And just so you understand, it's 11 resource officers, so it doesn't, it's not one per elementary school, but each resource officer has a number of elementary schools assigned to them. And they get to those elementary schools, and they also provide a point of contact for the elementary schools. And if you recall, the situation that occurred on Friday that I notified you guys about, that happened at one of our elementary schools. Our SRO was there on, Johnny on the spot. We also had a sergeant who was this area supervisor, who was also there. And also, the detective came to that elementary school. And we got a very quick response because we already had a relationship. So, it's a very positive thing, so I want to ask that you would approve that, so that we can continue providing that service to our elementary school.
Do I hear a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item X, Wilmington Police Department Service Contract, Appendix JJ. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is also a longstanding agreement with the Wilmington Police Department to provide four officers for our schools within the Wilmington city limits. It provides for only a portion of that cost, which the city then picks up the rest of it. The four officers are, one of them is permanently assigned, or it's not officially permanently assigned. She mostly stays at J.C. Rowe. And we now have another one at New Hanover and Haggard and Williston, and then they move between those schools as they need to. They work intricately with our SROs, our sheriff's deputy SROs, and it provides us a relationship with our largest municipality in New Hanover County. And we have a great relationship with them. And a couple of those folks, the girl over at, the lady, I don't say girl, that's inappropriate, I guess, the lady that works at J.C. Rowe has worked in our alternative programs even when it was at Mosley. So, she's been around a while. And of course, y'all know Corporal Melville, who works at New Hanover High School. Y'all see him at a lot of, at a lot of school board hearings. So, it's been a very beneficial arrangement, and it's also very cost-effective for us, we think. So, we ask that you approve this.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in, any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, 2017, 2018 Career and Technical Education State and Federal Funding Application, Appendix KK. Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval to apply for CTE funds for the 2017, 2018 school year. The application or local plan outlines programming, strategic planning, and, and management of these CTE funds. I would ask the board's approval.
Do I hear a motion to accept this recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, Southeastern Area Technical High School Calendar, Appendix LL. Dr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would request the approval of the board for the 2017-18 calendar for CTEC High School. The school, where as much as reasonable, has aligned their calendar with the calendar of Cape Fear Community College.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Questions?
So, they would finish up their, they would finish up their exams before Christmas, right? And the end of the grading period is December 19th.
Good Lord willing.
That's great. Yes, ma'am. So, we'll show how well this works, and then we'll pass the information up to Raleigh.
I'm sure that it'll change things for everyone. Pigs will fly.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item AA, 2017, 2018, North Carolina Title I Application, Appendix MM. Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would request the board's approval to seek application for Title I fund for the 2017, 2018 school year. These funds are used to provide additional resources for identified schools in the district who have free and reduced lunch populations that exceed 40 percent.
Do I hear a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes. What do you anticipate? You're going to apply. What do you expect to get, or want to compare it to this year?
Well, we have gotten indications that our allotment will be very similar to previous years, but there are a lot of unknowns. We've already made some initial allocations to school. Schools anticipating that. We were given information that final allotments will not be available to us until August 18th, I believe is the date. But, and, but we can't wait until that date to begin to plan. We use these funds to support, you know, as I said, additional resources for these schools. We often use these to reduce class size, to purchase additional tutoring services and specific programming. So, we're expecting the allotment to be very comparable to allotments that we received in the past.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item BB, Student Library Access Memorandum of Understanding, Appendix EN, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request the board's approval of the board of, of, excuse me, for the Student Library Access MOU with New Hanover County Public Libraries. This MOU will provide our students with ease of access to county libraries, um, and also provide the county with data to improve programming for our students. We look at this as a very positive way to extend that partnership with the libraries of the county.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions?
Yes.
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 Okay, so you put this in place, and you have more, uh, children with the ability to access library services, and as part of that library service, they have additional online courses and opportunities there, right?
They do, they will have greater access to those resources. Um, and also, by making the ease of access in terms of using, um, their student ID number to access library services, we think that our parents will take even greater advantage of this. Um, and then the benefit to the county and also to the district is that they're going to use our student outcomes in the aggregate to help determine the effectiveness of their services. So right now, they're programming, and I won't say that they're programming blindly, but they're programming in the absence of hard data as it, um, as students matriculate through our system, and they're very interested in bringing the two together.
And then there's also the thought that homeschoolers can use this?
Yes, there would be nothing that would limit homeschoolers from accessing this. Now, we, of course, will not have their data, and they will not have student, um, ID numbers, but we believe that, um, uh, you know, those students will benefit from the improved programming and the expanded access.
I have a question about, under the obligations, where it says student enrollment would be automatic unless the parents or guardians do not want them to participate, how are you going to go about notifying all these parents?
So in terms of that, I mean, um,
We have been working with, um, staff from the county library for over a year to try and get this going. We are actually kind of mimicking a program that Charlotte has. So we will be working with the public library and their staff to figure out the process, because there is still some technical stuff that has to go on for that to happen. The idea is there will be a big announcement, it'll be a main thing, things will be going home with the kids. Information will be there, so parents do have the information that this is happening. So it'll be not just something going home in the kid's backpack, it'll be on websites, it'll be on, you know, all kinds of advertisements. The county's going to have it, we'll have it, so that way, parents know if they want to opt out, that they have the right to opt out.
And, uh, this is a wonderful opportunity, and it will not cost us anything, which is unbelievable.
Not a dime.
This is the only free thing we've had tonight, right?
And also, in addition to this, even though this is available, if a parent chooses not to access the county library, there's no obligation, they're, they're not forced to, but if they choose to, then this makes it a much easier transition for them.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, yes. But I was thinking of all the information that the system would, would prov- provide. Some parent may object, so we want to make sure we don't, uh, infringe.
Yes, thank you.
This is wonderful.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Yes. Correspondence, anybody got any correspondence they want to share?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
As a former social studies teacher, and I'm sure Dr. Barclay, being a former social studies teacher, will appreciate this little piece of correspondence and little tidbit of information. I would be remiss if I didn't state that seventy-three years ago today, I won't give a test or anything, but seventy-three years ago today, D-Day, June sixth, nineteen forty-four, thousands of men died on that day. It was the invasion of Europe, which eventually brought down Germany. And if it were not for that battle, it's considered the most important battle of World War Two, that, you know, we might not be here today, and I think we need to remember that. Uh, just wanted to, to kind of pass that on, is the importance, you know, of this day.
I got a question to ask you about that one later on.
Dr. Barclay, anything, they'd say you would have given that on a test or something, and, uh,
There is, I used to tell my students in, in U.S. history, that you can look up every date you want, but there are really probably three dates you have to remember.
Yeah.
Seventeen seventy-six, December seventh, June sixth.
Yeah, I agree. Now, the rest of it, that's what books are for, you look, if you want to know a particular date or whatever, you look it up. But those you really should know, and the, the timeframe in which these things occurred, and the importance and significance of that day.
Then eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-four.
Yeah.
What happened next?
Civil War.
I mean, the War of Northern Aggression?
That, that was April the twelfth, nineteen eighteen sixty-one, Ford Anderson, I mean, Major Anderson.
Anyway. You can always tell a good southerner. Uh, all right, announcements.
Lots of them.
Yes, tomorrow, Wednesday, June seventh, two thousand seventeen, six thirty, New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the New Hanover County Schools Educator of the Year banquet. The event will be held in the cafeteria of Ashley High School. On Thursday, June the eighth, at six thirty, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the New Hanover County School Retirement Banquet. The event will be held in the cafeteria of Ashley High School. On Friday, June the ninth, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock, New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Career Readiness Academy Graduation Ceremony. Event will be held in the Auditorium of Snipes Academy of Art and Design. On Saturday, June the tenth, two thousand seventeen, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend New Hanover County Schools Traditional High School Graduation Ceremonies, starting at nine AM at Trask College M on the campus of University of North Carolina at Wilmington. On Tuesday, June the twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at eight thirty, the New Hanover Ca- AM, the New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a special meeting. The meeting will be held at the Board of Education Center, eighteen oh five South Thirteenth Street. The only item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven A one and one fifteen C dash four oh two. Lastly, the next regular meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education, scheduled for Tuesday, July the eleventh. Uh, since Fourth of July falls on Tuesday, we're meeting on the eleventh instead, at five thirty in the Board of Ed Center, eighteen oh five South Thirteenth Street. Anything else to come before this board?
I would remind you, TPYA graduation tomorrow, here in the boardroom.
Eleven o'clock.
At eleven o'clock.
Okay. If there is nothing else, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Remove.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.
We did well, it's a good thing we had that closed session.